We'll go ahead and start our regular city council meeting tonight. Thanks for being here, everybody that is here. We'll go ahead with opening remarks. Dale will give those, and then if I have a volunteer to do the pledge?
I'll do the pledge.
You'll do the pledge? Okay, great.
Father in heaven, as we gather here at the city council this evening, we are grateful for the many freedoms and opportunities that we have in this nation and mindful of our responsibility to represent our city and our citizens and the various decisions that we might pray that we might be guided and directed to make wise decisions and be able to analyze various problems and see what efficiencies can be achieved and what things can be done to continue to unify this area and improve it and make it a great place to live. Whether we might have a good friendly citizenry and a feeling of fellowship in both the city council and in the citizenry. We pray for these things and thank you for all the blessings that we enjoy daily in the name of Jesus Christ.
Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get a motion to approve our agenda and timeframe.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for a city council meeting for April 25th, 2017 to start at 7:03 PM.
Have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's do a roll call. Start with Dale.
Dale Bigler.
Bertie Thompson.
Nelson Abbott.
Kai Ellis.
Tricia Thomas.
Paul Crook.
Thank you. Public forum, Melanie, do we have public?
Nobody's signed up, but...
Does anybody want to sign up? I mean, it's like...
Do you want us to?
If you do, sign up, so we get your name.
Or state your name.
Or state your name.
It's Tricia Gunnerson. Oh, I just came because I didn't know what the law, what the law was about. There wasn't a document on the...
Oh, okay.
So I wanted to know what it was about. But with regards, I wanted to make a comment about the council meetings. They think, because you're all in government, you understand how it works. And they think when you look at the way people who aren't in council or government, they don't know when they can approach, they don't know when they can ask a question. So if there's a little bit more clarity maybe in the newsletters or on the website, so people know how to approach the government, that would be great. And then you'd get more involvement and people understand better.
That's a great comment.
And can we please have the same level of notification on a citywide basis for more important things as less important things? Meetings are more important than flags. It's all good for community and involvement and all that, but I think we need to look at the level of notification.
That's great, thank you. All right. Equipment replace, equipment replacement. Five thousand dollars is the dividing line between capitalization and expense. Do you have any other comment on that, or can I get a motion to go ahead and make that adjustment? I mean, we still have to go over the council for anything in that over two or anything where we have to change that comes to the council.
It won't change the way that it's...
It's just attracting the depreciation, the two thousand dollars just becomes...
Right.
What do you buy for two thousand dollars? You know what I mean?
Yeah. And again, you know, I've thought about it though. I mean, because it's like, well, this is what other cities are doing. But this is the one thing, our city is not like other cities. We don't have commercial districts, we don't have other revenue. We're a bedroom community up on a hillside. So anytime it's like, well, this is what other cities are doing, so we should do it. I really hesitate because our community is not like other communities and that's why people come here, right? So I know it's an accounting issue, right? But...
It was not changing the fact that we have to come to council for approval for funds.
No, I know. It's an accounting issue.
That we really want to track it in depreciation?
Yep.
And capitalized funds.
Right, and I understand that. But with our budget being so much smaller, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal, but there's probably a lot of things that we purchase under five grand a year.
Our staff is smaller and our access for financial directors is smaller and it kind of, both sides of the coin play that's equated.
No, I know, that's why, that's why I'm totally undecided on which way I want to go with this.
I recommend that we do it. Anybody willing to make a motion that we do it?
Nelson's good at making the motion. Yeah. All right. I'll make the motion that we raise our equipment replacement limit for depreciation to five thousand.
Motion made, anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And I think you've stated your reason.
Yeah.
You want to have another?
Nope, we're good.
Thank you. Volleyball court. Apply the thirty-two hundred dollar grant money to improve volleyball court and to replace the sand in the volleyball court with sod and to approve the surrounding area.
So I'll make a motion. Sorry, Deb. Read them ahead.
Don't worry. He's all excited to say it.
Only a few of these is one of the... Got to be an easy one, right?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to take the thirty-two hundred dollar grant money for parks to replace the sand in the volleyball court with sod and sprinkling system and landscape the surrounding area.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Poet works mower. Mayor?
Yeah.
I stepped out and called McKay. Eleven foot is no longer available. That was last year's model.
Okay, McKay?
We're not sure we can apply this year's model in the lab. We can definitely do some more research on that, but the fourteen is what's available at this moment through Jacobson.
Is this... I'd rather wait, but can we...
That's, I would rather wait too to see if we can, you know what I mean? Maybe next...
Is this something we needed to order right now to get it in time?
Well, this is available, the seventy gallon, so we'll look at...
Okay, so next...
Require it, we'll get more research on it.
I mean, if, next, what do you guys think?
Of course, we're in the moment season, so the sooner we can get this done.
Sure.
So, um... But we want to go next council meetings agenda.
Just say it. You want to say it.
I think so, and I think we ought to, I wouldn't mind getting involved, maybe, and check with a couple of people on it.
You don't want... So here, so let me go here. Just to make this official. Anybody want to make a motion that we purchased the mower, the option two, for seventy thousand dollars? Great, motion dies. That's official now. All right? We will, okay, so the recommendation with the council then is to further research and to bring this up next meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for. The other thought process I had here, I wish McKay was here. Well, I think we can get this to him. Is, I would like to, I mean, I'm analytical in a lot of ways. I would take and honestly measure out the park and figure out how many passes it's going to take to mow it with an eleven versus a fourteen foot and whether or not we're going to be able to, I mean, because, yeah, you're going to, every, every four trips, you're going to pick up a savings if you go to a wider one. But if it doesn't equal out that we actually need to mow another time and we're just spending extra money and we're not really gaining anything because it doesn't equal out.
But does anyone actually need a fourteen foot?
Well, if it's the only one available?
It's not one of them. Potentially, I mean, I just...
And I see, let's see what the, if we can get eleven, how much it is, and then we can see what the margin is between the two.
Yeah, let's do that. We do need a decision next council meeting, so...
Well, and I know you had said that McKay had talked with the golf course people.
With Mark or with...
I think that, you know, it'd be good to maybe get some feedback that way because I think the wider you go, the harder it's going to be with the hills. And they use a different mower altogether.
They have different styles, yes.
So they can mow faster and maybe we could just mow faster. I don't know.
Okay, we'll get that on next agenda. We'll try to get research, get an email for you, so please be, please be interactive if you see your email.
If we get it sooner, I mean, it could be even more...
So that you have further questions, that we get them answered before the next meeting.
Yes.
We can't delay the discussion till next meeting, so...
Well, we have the information of the specs.
We'll get it.
We can do that.
And actually, one time, you know, Mark had offered to, I think he's retiring, but had offered to just look at the parts and see what he thinks you ought to have for mowing up these. This, if it's all flat, you know, it's one thing, you know, a lot of hills and stuff, makes a difference.
All right, item number four, ratify pole vault. Can we, because now Reagan needs to do that.
It's not just...
Do we need to do anything to end that pole vault? Is there anything that we need to do to...
Ratify, there's no action, so...
So, well, there could have been, but there wasn't.
Right.
So there's no action.
It's just going to act for lack of a second.
So, so let's go to the actual, the new upgrade, eleven hundred and forty foot upgraded distribution line, twelve inch. Any further discussion on that? Come on, can I get a motion? Fifteen thousand, two hundred and one, do we need to cushion that to sixteen or anything like that, or is that pretty hard?
You know, let me make the comment that I was going to make before. You know, looking at running the line through the roundabout versus running the, running the line under the road, you know, from the, from the tank down, it seems like that was considerably less, less money running that down there than it was on the, on the, having the developers contractor do it up on the, up here where we had the road, where we brought it from the tank, the tank down. And I think that, you know, and just looking at those calculations there, if we're going to run that, that additional line up through there and you can get it for thirteen thirty-three, I wonder while waiting and doing it at a later time, what kind of price you would get.
So this is just an upsizing of it.
This is just an upsizing. If you were to do it ourselves...
So the cost already started to do it.
It's over thirty dollars a linear strike.
Just paying for the bigger pipe and bigger value.
So, so they project, we're saving...
Eighteen thousand, two hundred and nine.
Okay, buy just that, it's upsizing. Just by the time, by the time they're doing it.
The developer has to put in an eight inch line right now to be able to feed his project.
And we're just...
And so this allows us an opportunity.
We want to make a twelve inch.
Instead of having to put another twelve inch line in later, we can go ahead and upsize this and use this line in the future.
And he needs the answer, they're ready to move. So, well, I think they are, you took all your equipment away. Well, I guess you didn't, but you did, right?
I guess so, kind of all...
But someday, they're going to dig this hole in front of their property. They're going to put a pipe in, and we would like it twelve inches instead of eight. And that's going to cost us fifteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars.
So, sorry, Nelson.
You know, I was just going to say, this is, I believe, part of our capital facilities plan. We're going to utilize impact fees.
So you have...
A portion of this.
So you have a line item in the capital facilities plan to put that twelve inch line in at some point in the future. And we, we push that back out, you know, past the wells. So the developer is developing right now and needs to put a water line in there. This provides an opportunity to be able to make that happen. And so what will happen is after this is put in, the next time that we look at the capital facilities plan, obviously, we're going to have to adjust for this because it was put in, you know, it's a portion of this cost by the developer, but the eight inch line, that difference will be adjusted out of the capital facilities plan.
I think Nelson's coming with...
Of course, I just want to make sure.
Part of this is eligible for impact fees, and if so, how much?
Yes.
Because it is in our capital.
Well, so there's forty, there's items, forty-seven, I want to say, is on the water projects.
So about seven thousand of this will be paid by impact fees and the other nine is going to...
Come out of the water fund.
Eight is going to come out of the water fund.
Eventually. Depending on how the big well project goes, because we have that big expense, could be all forty-seven percent of that is also...
Well, we had anticipated spending some of that money already this year and we haven't because they're not working on it at the moment. So perhaps we can rearrange the order of things and make it work.
But this is eligible for the forty-seven percent.
Yes, okay.
Okay. So a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve fifteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars to upsize Parkview Corner Water Line to twelve inches.
I second.
Is that, are we good on that motion? Okay. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Good decision. Good decision. All right, Gladston View Preliminary Platte approval. We're going to turn, we're going to turn some time over to Shay to give us some information on this. You got your pointer and all?
Yeah.
Royce, will you dim the lights? Will you take the one set down?
This thing is going to go to sleep on us. Okay, I think this is going to come back up here.
So you may remember back on March 14th, this project was discussed in city council at a work session. And then since that point in time, it's gone to planning commission with a public hearing that happened on April 13th. And the planning commission has recommended approval of the project. There were a couple minor changes they wanted to make. There was a mistake in the cross section that has been corrected with the trail. The drawing showed the trail down at the bottom of the curb and gutter instead of up at the top where it should be. There was also an issue with the, at the end of the water line providing some way to be able to drain the line or...
Keep it circulating.
Exactly, so there's an extra fire hydrant that was put in on the, on the project. So those have been addressed. The drawings that you received this afternoon, I believe that were emailed to you this afternoon. You have those two changes in it. We just barely received those revisions this afternoon, so got those out to you. During the public hearing, this is, this was one of those rare projects where we actually did have some public comment in the public hearing. And the two, two main issues that were brought up with that was concern over how the storm drainage was being handled with it and how sumps work. And so we discussed that and basically discussed some of the requirements for storm drainage and how that's handled. We have sumps out in the street. We also have on these larger lots that are up on the south end, we also have a pond back in the backside of the lowest lot that will carry storm drainage. There's a catch basin that will take it back to that pond. So that's really, if we got any large flow up there that the sumps couldn't handle, this has been designed to handle not only the amount that's in the, typically in a stump, but it's also designed that if we got a little bit larger flow in there, you know, we can handle it through that pond on the upper end. And that's probably, from a drainage perspective, that's probably the biggest concern because you've got water coming down that road that's really steep in there. The road's relatively steep, so you have water coming down that road quickly. And so as you, as you come down, you flatten out a lot more along there and that's not as big a concern. You have more time for the water to get into the catch basins and into the sumps.
Is there any connection to that catch basin from the sump or wherever it's, or is it just where it ran, ran off through a yard or what is the...
So there's a, there's a, there's a catch basin there.
A pipe.
To make it, yeah, and then a pipe that goes back to the pond.
Catch basin or sump.
Correct. And then the other thing that we've done with this, more out of courtesy for Payson for the golf course, is on the backsides of these, of these upper lots, since that is quite steep in there, initially, they'll cut just a small drainage ditch along the backside of those that will go into this pond so that, so that we make sure that if there's any, if there is any overland runoff or before people get things landscaped, if they have something torn up and there's erosion issues, hopefully that'll act as a defense and keep it off the, keep it off the grass. But as soon as people get it landscaped, it really shouldn't...
Is this just an open ditch or a covered pipe?
Just an open ditch that would just go down the back. And so I, honestly, I think most people will probably keep their, those large lots natural for the most part. And if they do that, we really won't see a need for it at all. So anyway, that was one of the things that was discussed as a concern. The other concern that was brought up just had to do with driveways and the fact that, realizing that on these large lots, there's quite a drop off. And so some of those homes are definitely going to be built lower than the street. And so we basically discussed the provisions in the code for reverse slope driveways and the grades that they would be required to meet. And if we have a reverse slope driveway, the code requires it to come to planning commission for approval anyway. And so we can, we can have that extra consideration with it. So it's not something that'll just go through the permit and get blown off as, you know, as not being considered. So I, in fact, I was, the very bottom lot, the largest one on the south end, the really the best spot to build in that lot is right in the middle of the lot. There's a large flat area in there, it's relatively steep. And that had to do with grading for some T-boxes or something years and years ago that, and so, you know, those people more than likely would put their house in the middle of the lot. And then they have a long, a long driveway to get out of there. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't really have grading issues. So anyway, those were, those were some of the issues that were discussed. Planning commission considered those and, like I said, still looking at it, felt that those weren't major issues and that they'd been adequately addressed or code adequately addresses it and is voted to recommend this for approval. Basically, this preliminary application meets the requirements of the R-115,000 zone. There aren't any exceptions being asked for here. It's, it's pretty clean. It meets the general plan. We actually, at the TRC level, in concern with the slopes on some of these lots, asked them to provide us a drawing showing us where the buildable areas were on the lots so that we can make sure that each one of the lots did have a reasonable buildable area and that we weren't going to have large cut and fill areas with it, which they were able to show that to us. And so we're, we're comfortable on the preliminary level with what has been proposed.
And I know that was one of our concerns last time, you know, is following some, even though this isn't hillside residential, following some of those guidelines in there because of the steepness of the slopes and the nature that we had buildable lots.
Boy, that's, you know, we only have that one, the one street, you know, that's up by, up to your, your street where those are all sloped down to the, down to the house. Well, that is, there was like some heavy drop offs. I don't know what the difference is from the road grade to the land level. What is that difference? Twelve feet or...
Well, and honestly, it really, it really varies on where they decide to put the house on the, on buildable area because if you go back in, say, what, fourteen or fifteen here, and they decide to put something back in the middle, they may, they may drop off twenty plus feet from the street to get back there. However, advantage being, if they do that, is that they've got a long ways to, to bring a driveway out. And the slope, and the slope on that, the grade, they could put it out to the side of the house so all the drainage is coming off, it's not going in towards the house. And, you know, they'd have room to be able to put a, an area that they can turn around so they were actually coming out forward. I, I'll tell you this, because I have this discussion with somebody else that's purchased some property in town up on the, where the Salem Hills Drive, that section of road that's not developed yet. There's a, these people purchased a large parcel up there and they want to build a house on it, which means they're going to develop part of that road as part of that if they decide to. There was a sticker shock there when they realized everything they had to do. But anyway, it was interesting discussing this with them because they have the same situation. And that they're, they're dropping off, it's steep coming off there and it drops down and it continues to drop down full way through the lot, just like these do. And it was interesting because they had actually looked at this and thought about it and basically said, well, we want to bring it in as close to the road as we can, obviously, to minimize that drop off. But they figured out the location on that site where if they poured a ten foot basement and then their, and then their stem walls, so the floor in the basement would be at ten feet, but stem walls would actually be at twelve feet. So they'd be a couple of feet lower than that, if that makes sense. So they've, they've gotten twelve feet there, but the nice thing is is then they get a nice nine foot ceiling in the basement.
That's why I don't walk my house, especially with ten foot.
And then with the, with the house set up on top of that, they'd worked that out to where they could basically get it in and slope that driveway out to the street within our, within our set back and make it work. So, I mean, a little thought on that, you know, somebody might be able to pull that off. I see on some of these lots more reasonably that they pull the lots, or they pull the houses back in.
I think we do both, we're going to put it back. We're going to have taller basins, we're going to suspend the garage slabs so there's no fill in there, you just take advantage. You're basically setting your basement on grade with a full walkout around it. And then if you're gaining ten feet of that grade you're talking about just by how you set your home and do a walkout and do your suspended slabs on your garage, you're not filling any of that in either.
Well, that's what Gunnerson's did with their house. I mean, they've got the driveway that's up and they did it that way. And then they have, my kid's called the drawbridge from the street out to the front.
So I just, so, so I want to make sure that, this is an important topic. And the reason why I feel like very important topic is because we have the houses that have reverse slope driveways. And in the winter, they become a nightmare and they have to park it in the street. These folks don't have parking in the street options, right? They're not going to be in the street in the wintertime. They just don't, so they're going to be in the driveways.
And I say it somewhere. So reverse slope driveway is where the slopes continues to the structure. These, these aren't going to have that. They're going to have, I mean, it's going to have a little, a lot of these, if you look at the topography, I mean, if you put a house right in here, their driveway may kind of do one of these. And it, actually, there's, I don't know if you have that there. The topography kind of shows that where the lines kind of go like that, where there isn't much elevation difference. From here to here, there may be, but if you, you know, driveway kind of comes over the southern, you know, kind of...
I just wanted, just wanted to add my two cents. It is an important, it is an important item and I'm not saying they can't...
Reverse slope driveways are not allowed in El Cerritos with the code. These are not going to be under that definition.
I thought we did allow it.
Well, it's, I guess, we're talking about semantics here and that. But can I make a suggestion with this? And, you know, I don't know what Dean will think about this, but on these larger lots, if these houses... lots, if, if these houses are going to have a driveway that, that drops down off the road, why don't we require that there's a location for a turnaround so at least that people are attacking this coming out forward instead, instead of backwards? If that, if that makes sense.
And that was my thing is can you put like a circular drive on the front as part of it? So if they go down any way?
You do a certain drive, you do a hammerhead.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be hard because of the, because of the great drop here. But I think if, if there was a hammerhead or, or even if they're coming into the side of their garage, that's the easy way is if the garage is actually facing, stood facing the street, facing the side, then you have a large turning area in there anyway. And I, personally, if I had one of those lots, I would want that anyway, just to be able to.
Yeah.
Just come out, come out forward because coming out forward, at least that way you can see too, this is a steep road. You can at least be able to see better what's, what's coming down the street.
And are heated driveways required on driveways that are so steep?
Twelve, between 12 and 15 percent. Our maximum, so, and, and they have to get special permission for that. That's not, and basically that's coming in and showing that they're heating the driveway.
So what percent do we think these will have?
Well, we weren't going to put heated driveways, so we'll heat them to 12 percent.
Well, I mean, average would be maybe, are they going to be?
Depending on what it is, I mean, somewhere between eight, 12 would be my guess. Like, like Jared said, I mean, there's a way to exit at the low point, but come across to the high point of the lot.
Yeah, if you put your garage over on this side and you're, and you were swinging this around and then coming out to the low point.
It really minimizes your.
You could, you could.
And you gotta realize if you're sitting in here, how deep that lot is, that's like 80 feet, 80 to 100 feet of driveway to, I mean, they're talking.
These are long lots.
This is way different than what you're thinking of most.
What is depth?
I know, but that's like a really long driveway. And I mean, are people going to want their driveway crossing over? I mean, I know you can't do that, but is that in the plans?
Well, I mean, that, everybody customizes however they.
Right. And I'm just saying, I don't think most people would want their driveway crossing from one edge of their yard.
Oh, I think on these type, they, these type, it's going to be more of a meandering, their house is setting, maybe it's going to be a totally different look than what we're at all used to in Elk Ridge. You're talking double.
No, it's not a bigger lot.
Higher lot. What, what is the frontage? Is it a hundred or a hundred and?
Hundred.
These are just a little bit over a hundred.
And then how, what depth?
Uh, three hundred.
Three hundred feet.
Okay. So they do have some sort of depth in there.
Well, it's, it's kind of one of those things that you look at, I mean, these are all view lots because of how much drop off there is. Most people are probably going to orient their house so that they can.
These will be.
Look north with that view.
They're going to be amazing homes. I mean, you're talking.
But, so, so I guess going back, you know, if somebody builds their house up towards the front.
I haven't built a lot, just to tell you.
I don't think it's going to be as, as big an issue because they'll, you know, their driveway won't be sloping down. But if they're building it towards the back, if, if, you know, if you'd like to say that we require that on these large lots.
Some kind of a hammerhead or something is important.
Put a hammerhead in there. I think that's reasonable.
Cause they're coming out on Elk Ridge Drive.
Our, our code requires that when it's on a, on a, can hear from now, minor or major collector or something like that. It's, it's a main road, so they have to either have a turn, the semicircle or a hammerhead type driveway anyways.
Well, that's, that's what I would just like to make sure because I mean, and it's not, it's not a super busy road now, but when it collects over to Salem Hills and once the upper, the south end is all developed, that's going to be a really busy road. And so, you know, 20 years from now, we don't want issues of people trying to back out their driveway onto the main road.
And it's steep coming down?
Yeah, it's very steep.
Anyway.
So that's, that's just my concern is that either we have a circular or a hammerhead driveway on those.
Okay.
Okay. So let me, are you?
If you want to go for it.
No, so, you know, last time we met, we had a discussion on the trail where the trail goes up.
Yeah, where the holes and those kinds of.
So I asked Jay and Royce and that, I says, well, why is there a possibility to put the trail in the back of the lots along the golf course? Right? And if you look at the, if you look at the large plan on that.
Did you have that on?
Well, let me, I can pull up Google Earth so you can see the whole area.
That'd be good. Then you can kind of show that out a little bit.
Yeah, cause.
So the project, the project is right here.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
I'm so confused.
That's the project.
This, this area, hang on, and then right here it swings back and it, and comes back in roughly somewhere right in here.
Go deeper, that's where the deeper lots start.
That's where the deeper lots are, right in there.
Where's, sure they're around about.
Dean, is the, is the boundary right at those trees or is it, I think it's further back. It includes that property, doesn't it?
It's pretty far back.
A little bit.
So, so basically that's the, that's the boundary of the, of the, of the development that we're looking at right now.
Are you caught up?
Yeah, I figured out where we are.
Okay.
Just a second.
And, and the park, the, the future, uh, belt where we might put a civic center or a park there, right?
Is down there.
Ultimately, we'd like to have the trail connect into there and come all the way up, you know, just going south, right? All the way up and so.
So where would it go?
So what the, what the mayor was talking about here was, was possibly you tie into the park, bring the trail across and down the street, work something out with Payson to bring it across the back.
Just the back of those four homes.
Just the back of the existing homes and, and right back through there, run it across the back of the property, along back of the golf course. And then it would, there's, there's a couple of options at this point. I guess what one would be to, to come back along the back, swing it back out to the street or another option may be actually to carry it straight up. But what, what would be even cooler, I guess, if you want to look at it in that way, is if we were able to talk to Payson and if, in the, I'll go back, in the, in the regional trails plan for the county, there is a, a trail shown on the other side of the golf course that goes all the way up to Payson Canyon.
Oh, so tie into that.
And, and so you could take this and it, you know, work that out with, with Payson to somewhere along here, be able to bring this across and actually tie it into that trail. And maybe that becomes the route for the forest service access, you know, depending on what happens with Forbay. If Forbay ends up in private hands and we can't access it, then we're.
And if it's a regional trail that we tie into, that's off, that's potential grant money there too.
Yeah, that's, that works really well for the mag money that we were going after.
Right.
Previously, and especially if Payson would be willing to put in with us.
Yeah.
Towards that.
Right. As opposed to, as opposed to having, basically as opposed to having that trail run right along Elk Ridge and not have any.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I like that idea. You know, one of the things, issues that I see with our current trails is that they're right next to the road and that we say no parking, but people park there anyways because it's like off-street parking. And so with this issue, we'd already solved that by putting the curb and putting the trail higher so people couldn't park on it. But I actually think that makes a much better trail if you're on the backside.
Creeping into people's houses, right?
Well, we creep into people's houses off of Oak Ridge. That's what you do, right?
That's what I do.
I mean, I would say a couple of issues are is topography. You're talking some grade issues of, and coming around and the second thing, what, what's your, you're talking about connect, having that park is that we're talking about a whole nother park up here that you're, you know what I mean? So do you want access, are people going, what are they going to use it for right now? What they would probably use it for, in my opinion, is, is to get from park to park or, and connecting it with the other stuff. Maybe there's a regional that, that spends off in the future in other areas, but what's the immediate need for?
Well, and I think, and I think that if we did come up at the top there and even if we went back onto Elk Ridge and get back to Forbay, right? And once those trails, you know, whatever they do back there, we're not sure, but that's obviously one access point and then going to the west into Payson is another one. I mean, I mean, honestly, to make this, to, to really do this, you know, we'd have to number one, get with Payson and see if we could get some kind of an access behind those four host, houses there, right? Cause that's, that would be an important corridor right there, right? They may have, may have to have an access point where the existing home is and the, and the first lot on the north side so that they could get back there potentially off of Elk Ridge Drive there as well. Might be a couple of access points that way, but, but I think it's a consideration because, you know, we have an opportunity to, to take a trail off the main road.
And I think we'd prefer trails off the main road.
So.
Who else would the trail in? Dean?
Well, that's a, that would be the question because it's not, I, I don't believe so of how this would read. Cause you'd have a road, you, you match up to a road thing, now you're going to have park strip and you're going to have, and the lots along the golf course aren't, there are already channels a little bit depth wise, they're not as deep as they are. So now if you have a trail width on the backside and your public utilities, if this was going over, now you're shrinking that and you're doubling up coughs that way too.
But we're putting our public utilities under the road and they're not in the easement, correct?
Well, there's a.
You got.
Well, gas, electrical's behind.
Right. It's, it would be behind the trail, but you're still going to have.
But there's going to be the 10 foot.
Communications.
That you're going to have a sidewalk up top along with a park strip and everything else.
So if you put it up top, then do you have to pay for it? And if we put it down below, we have to pay for it?
Yeah, I think you can probably come across on the top that it's part of the road cross section of what I'm given. There, it's, over here, it's an offsite of a, it's kind of a city wishlet, you know, that's something they want to do and that's probably wouldn't be, might be to have law works.
So one of, one is we get, we require an easement there. Yeah.
Come on, you're building a couple million dollar homes, you know?
Well, and one of the reasons we have heard of it is, is he doing that 10 foot, which was part of the discussion a month ago in here about what's put the 10 foot from the houses. So that's, that's why you drew it up the way you did it.
Right.
So.
So it would have to be redrawn all the way up? I just don't want to make the city pay for something if we can get it for, you know what I mean? Like, hey, if I can get Dean to pay for it, I'm going to do it.
You're talking Brits.
I mean, just have another tax vote and have all the people who are using it pay for it and see how that one goes.
So let, let me just point out one thing as I, as I sit here and look at this and part of what Dean's saying here. So he's in the R1 15,000 zone. He's shown on this plan up to the point that it transitions back to these 300 foot deep lots. He's, he's shown lots along there that are based, they're basically 15,000 square foot lots. And so there's 10 of those lots along there. The frontage is slightly over 100 feet because of the, because of the depth. And so, and so basically going back along the backside with the, taking 20 feet out of the backside of those lots to, for a, a trail right away. Basically what, what that causes for him in order to maintain that 15,000 square feet is that he's got to widen out those lots and, and in essence, it's going to lose, lose a lot along the way.
Not just that, but the, what type of home you can even build. You know, you're talking, now you're 30 feet of, when you get done with your setbacks, you're 30 feet of home depth, which is, which if you think what that is, those feet is, how do you put, what's your great room going to look like or what's your kitchen going to look like? How's your garage? Your garage is up on the side of the home. Now you have to go completely width wise on homes and, and that's not a.
So we're talking about not stuff that's not in this plan, we're talking about the other lots between Park Drive and the.
Other part of this, this, this plan is actually two sheets. So you have that two A and two B.
Okay.
So you're seeing, you're seeing, you're seeing eight, nine and 10 or, no, sorry, oh, he's 12 lots, not 10, sorry.
It's 12 lots.
12 lots across there to there. Sorry, I was reading the.
And actually I think, I think realistically that, that that trail is going to have to be on the side of the road because this is a 42 foot road, right? Through there right now, where those houses are existing, that is wide enough to, we just haven't, haven't striped it as the trail yet. But if that came across the front of these, then you could go back and have a 10 foot easement. You've got a lot more land that's available there. That would be a beautiful walking trail, maybe even for the, for the homeowners. The negative, or, or it may be a negative. And they don't want anybody walking back behind my house.
If I spend a million dollars on my house, plus a lot, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't walk behind my house.
So now I do, I just want to, I just want to clarify, just to make sure I understand. So your thought is, is on the smaller 15,000 square foot lots, then you'd have the trail on the street and then at this point where we transition back, and there is an old, there is an old golf course, trail right there. So it would basically be at that point, we'd get a, a 20 foot right of way to get back to the golf course. And then we'd work something out with, with Payson to carry that across to the regional trail. Is that?
And then up the back.
Is actually the idea, or do you think about carrying this up the, along the backs of these and up the backside of the lots?
There is a trail that's, that's highly used by bicyclists and, and walking trail that goes from the High Sierra on over to Forbay that we've discussed in that regional trail. And that connects to Payson Canyon. And Dan Shaw has a lot of the property over on the west side of the golf course and he wants to develop some trails through his, through his property as they, as they develop. That would be part of that regional.
So, so what you're creating is just basically bring this behind the back of his lots and then, and up and tie, tie in Gladstand or?
Yeah, but just tie into the road.
Just in this one section.
I, I don't think you could go all the way across because you're going to cut across the golf, the golf course then. I don't think, you know what I mean?
I don't see where it's connected.
I don't think it, you just keep it where you have it. And you already have, there's one lot up top, right? But you already have a easement that doesn't have anything, but you have an easement there to be able to continue it and you can take it all the way around and send it up with the golf. You know, if that's what it's going to be, Gladstand Drive is probably going to be where you're connecting it, right?
Yeah, that would be.
They're talking about, they're trying to do, somebody's trying to do a big huge parade home right here, which would have to have the, this, cause it's crazy, cause this is private, they're going to have a cross connection. Somebody bought that and doesn't know what to do with it. They're trying to do a, a secondary clubhouse and it just got shut down at, at, in Payson. But I think now they're trying to work out just putting a big home there on the one.
On the one side?
Just on.
The west side of the park.
And it takes up that whole thing. So that would even, and, cause this isn't Payson's ground, some of this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you couldn't cut through there. That's what, you would have to come through the back and up to Gladstand Drive.
Yeah, I don't know where it cuts through at.
And then just.
It would have to come up from those.
Come back over to Elk Ridge Drive and up to High Sierra.
Yeah, they'd have to exit anyway. Anywhere it would have to be up on the top where that trail is already existing.
Well, I think that you'd have to have a conversation with Payson and see if they have any plans in this area anyway, or what they, what they're thinking of doing.
Yeah.
Right? They may have something already thought through here, right? Tying into the golf course or something, right? There's quite a bit of area, but they're, they could do some.
We're on the same trails committee there, like the South County Trails Committee with, with Payson's, they like to connect trails. But they're not, there's never been any discussion about going across the golf course.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say go straight west.
This other one skirts the back of the, of the golf course.
Right.
Uh, to connect it to Forbay.
But this is my, this is my point, you're gonna have Elbridge Drive, it's gonna be a fairly busy road. You're gonna have a, how wide is the pavement from gutter to gutter?
I think you have forty-two.
Forty-two feet.
Forty-two.
You're gonna have a gutter and then you're gonna have a ten foot piece of pavement, right?
Extended to the concrete.
Fifty-some odd feet wide.
It'll be a, a wider sidewalk, concrete sidewalk is what this is.
Yeah. So basically, yeah, you got, you got fifty-two feet of hardscaping plus the curving, so you really probably are like. Almost fifty-five feet from back of gutter to back of gutter on, on that.
I agree.
Lot of pavement, so.
I agree with you, I think it'd be better on the backside.
But, and I, I brought it up because I personally think there's value in exploring it.
Yeah, I think we need more information and we need.
I know there's some difficulties of that, the lot sizes are clearly a difficult issue, the, the depth, you know what I mean? Is there a chance that Payson would, you know, let us, you know. You know, deed us over, change the line, I don't know what we can do there to give us maybe even space on the, on the golf course side. And keeping liability issues.
Like you would put it right here?
I don't know what could possibly, but isn't there a value, some value exploring it?
Well, what?
And getting those trails off of our main road?
But wait, do, then we pay for it if we put it back there, correct? I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not.
Instead of the front? Instead of the front?
If I go up front, then, then it's paid for, paid for, if I put it back, then you pay for it?
If I was to agree which trail would you wanna walk on, this is a.
Well, if I build a million dollar home, which I plan to, just down the street.
Right.
I do not want someone walking behind my house.
Don't do it on the golf course, we'd walk into your house to get their dang balls after they're in there. I've been there, done that, I've lived there.
I just, if it were me. That makes the sellability of a, of that lot way lower for me, I'm just being honest. Like I wouldn't want people walking back there.
And there's golf cart paths there and all that.
Well, I don't care about, I don't care about that, it's just the buildability of it, it, that is. There's no way that's gonna happen, yeah, I mean, the, the depth of that is not there.
Yeah, I think you have to.
This would have to have already been in a plan to.
And I don't wanna end up paying them.
You have to go to condemn, right? I mean, it.
Yeah, I.
Well, I mean, we wanna take the.
So, so fifty-six feet of roads, I decided, and you're not gonna get a single park, tree in your parkway.
The what?
No trees on the.
No, no trees. Cause we gotta have.
Trail.
We gotta have ten foot.
Con trees instead of a four or five foot sidewalk.
So.
So your other.
One of the few that have a lot of trees on.
Aircraft carrier flat top, here we come.
So, so your other choice would be.
I haven't yet landed in Elbridge.
Slightly decrease the size of that trail in that area, which can always be done something different later. And have your trees along there that would make it look, I mean, that's.
Do a six foot trail in a. Instead of a ten or.
Instead of four.
Park strip. I bet you could even move it a little further back because then the utilities could be between the curb and the, the other, on the other side of the trail too.
See, I think it's worth having a conversation with Payson City along that golf course edge to see.
But, but, so here's my point though.
They're.
Coming from me on my end.
They're, they're not gonna go.
I'm not willing to do that for the lot size, if you wanna have a discussion on putting the trail on, on the golf course and. That, that, that doesn't really have much to do with this project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's true.
Well, once, once you get up to the top, we'll get to those deeper lots potentially.
But even there, I. The requirement, this is not, Shay, am I wrong? And I don't think. You can all of a sudden say, well, we want to do this to your ground, you're gonna pay for that, I mean, there's, I mean, it's not, it's not what typically would happen, it's not allowed to.
Yeah, if we do that, we even say we're gonna take. Can we?
Well, so it, we have in the general plan, we show a trail up, up Elbridge Drive.
Okay.
So the, the requirement, but requirement to put one on Elbridge Drive. That's.
That's what I'm operating.
That's what they're in the general.
What you can do.
In, in the, in the, in the, and then in our code, we basically, we have this really generic statement under the subdivision section of the code. Stating trails. That, that we can require trails. So, very generic statement, I, and, and I, you know.
Well, topography is another huge issue. We're talking about driveway, you're talking about, what are you, who's gonna push their kid on their car?
Does he know our existing codes?
Yes.
And he's not asking for any exceptions? Then why are we talking about all this other stuff?
Cause we're just talking about.
Because we're preliminary, I wanna make sure that we, we could.
We have a code.
For the sake of a discussion, right? That we look at the overall picture of what Elbridge City's gonna be, frankly. Striping, putting a piece of striping down a road and say, don't park here as a trail, that's a low class trail. Putting a piece of curb and gutter and put sidewalk, that just says, I got my personal parking spot now in front of my house.
Not necessarily.
Now, now, take, now, now, I'm, I'm arguing the side for. Just for one reason, because I want to make sure we've had the discussion, right? Because I can argue the other side as well. But this is the time in which the discussion needs to happen and if we can't do it, then we don't do it. If it's not the right thing to do because of the logistics or the, the, not logistics, but the slopes.
I just don't think it's gonna happen. I think that's a, this is a pipe dream.
So.
Well, I mean, it's not gonna happen if you don't explore the options.
Make a motion to approve the plan.
Right? I mean, cause the thing is, right? People love the Spanish River Trail, but why do you love it? Cause it's off the main road. People like to ride and bike and walk.
There's a river.
Not by traffic.
But there aren't backyards on the Spanish River Trail really.
Like you're not up in people's business.
There's a, there's also river.
And the few that there are, not a huge.
But that's, that's how golf course houses are. Every golf course house has people walking behind it, I mean.
But not on a trail, that's scary.
I'm just. How's a trail any different than golfers? I mean, if you're gonna have people in your backyard, you're gonna have people running back there.
If a guy's walking the trail, I'm having a little wet ball.
Because the people that build on a golf course build there knowing that there're gonna be people golfing.
Yeah, they know that.
That's, that's a big difference, the other thing too is. It's been probably eight or nine years ago when we worked out the sewer agreement and everything else with Payson. At that point in time, we took and we cleaned up between us and Payson. What is in Payson and what is in Elbridge because. Some of their golf course holes were in Elbridge and not in Payson and they went out, they surveyed it, we did all this. They did that because they wanted absolute control of what happens on their golf course. And. You know, I, I, I just. I frankly, I think we have an issue with a ten foot wide trail and for a million dollar homes. I think that that's more trail than we, we need and we should have. I mean, I'm gonna speak my piece now, cause this is preliminary too, you've got curb, we can have. Some type of mow strip landscaping, something between the curb and a much narrower trail. And have a four to six foot wide sidewalk and that should be more than adequate for the amount of traffic that is gonna go up that steep of a hill to begin with. People will go down it, but going up it, I mean, that's like. You know, I, I, I made the comment, if you ever find my body on a running trail. It's foul play because you're not gonna find me there for any other reason, okay? One time you're on a trail is because.
Somebody planted anyways.
But, but there are lots of people.
But there are people that, that will.
Yeah, they will feel the same way.
You know, I already run that, so.
But the reality of it is.
I think it'd be a better decision to have a planner.
I, I think that we really should have something there, I think we need to take a holistic look at this and go, what makes sense for this area? Just because we have a standard that says we're gonna have a ten foot trail and we gotta find some way to shoehorn this in. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's the right thing for this particular scenario. So, I mean, I.
I think.
Cause they, would we prefer that, like you're, like you're saying, the sidewalk and the?
I don't think, I don't think that should come into our factor though, is the sellability of the lots. That's not our issue. Our issue is the niceness of the city.
Well, but if we're, what we're, yes, but.
No, but I tell you what that does, if the house, there's no parking option on it. And, and it definitely delineates it off the road, right? There's no, you know, there's a clear.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, I like it raised and off the road because.
Where it is.
But it is a concrete trail.
Yes, well, it's behind the curb.
Behind the curb, yeah, that's not raised. That's a bump.
Yeah.
So, uh.
But if you had a plan of trees in it.
Looking down at their cell phone and actually seeing all the taking for kids.
And, and a narrower trail. You know, this is the only sec, the, the reason that we've got that and that alongside of the road. Uh, in all of the older section of, uh, of Elbridge, that other, that whole south half of, of Elbridge. Is that nobody's, uh, wasn't there when they developed and, uh, and nobody's there to pay for it. You know, it's, just getting in a walking trail is a heck of a lot better than trying to walk on that twenty foot or twenty-two foot.
That's true.
Street and all of the, that's half of the, that's a third of the city anyway, uh, now. And, no, I don't see, I don't see a big, uh, problem with having the, having the ten foot, uh, uh, concrete. Uh, walking, uh, area up along that whole strip. We'll have, it'll be coming off of, from down where we're at, from the, from the roundabout. We will, we might have a trail that's off-road on property we own, but then it comes on road. There's already the, the width there that's striped, just double striping it for walking trail. It'll go on up and catch this, uh, this concrete, uh, you know, walking trail. And that goes up to Gladstone, uh, Drive and I think that is a good addition to where they can walk, uh, in the city.
Is there consensus?
A ten foot trail, this room here is.
Fourteen feet wide.
Now, I'm talking floor to ceiling. We're what?
Eight.
How tall are we, Jerry, in here? Eight feet. So I had a, so I had another two feet on that, that's how wide of a trail we're gonna have.
Every trail, every trail that you get any government funding for is a ten foot trail.
But the government's not funding this, Dean's, Dean's.
So, what if we did this, cause I want, honestly, I live here, right? I want things to look good, I just want it buildable and I think that. What we're looking before wasn't really practical, in my opinion. What, what if we, instead of the ten foot, maybe we expand that to. Gotta be a little careful because you have electrical and stuff, but maybe we can slide that back to, to twelve feet or eleven or twelve feet. Do a seven foot or an eight foot trailer. And then have that, cause I think it'd look great to have a three foot or, four foot is what we have right now.
Parking strip.
Just a little park strip to get something in there so it solves what you're talking about.
Yeah, I like.
We have a phenomenal, you know, two, if there is a bike on there, they can, I mean, most trails are eight foot, Spanish Forks Trail system's eight foot. And most of their clovered road areas. You know, if we had something that's a little wider, slided into the lot. We'd have to. Make sure that if, if we're dedicating that, you'd have to probably give a little bit of an exception on. You know, front setback's twenty-five right now, maybe that. You know, maybe that needs to be, just in case it affects the depth of the home, maybe that's, makes up for that two feet to make it work.
See.
I'd be fine with.
I look at that stuff, yeah, that's practical to me.
But nothing.
So if you're willing to give like another two feet easement and then change the setback by that same two feet, I think I'd, I'd go for that. Cause then you could have a four foot planter with your trees and kind of your greenery and then your eight foot trail, cause eight foot's wide enough. Then you're gonna separate it from the road, cause you're gonna have that four feet.
And maybe I'm speaking out of turn, I hope it all works, I've, I've seen it on a plan, but if I can make that work, I'm willing to do that. Just, I think it'll be a better one.
To, to, just to, just to spell that out, so. If we, if, if it's dedicated to the city, which would be the ideal. Would it, would we have that whole, that whole trail dedicated and, and not sitting on an easement? Then his lots are gonna be slightly less than fifteen thousand square feet.
That's true.
Be losing that because as I said, he's, he's pretty much hemmed in those, those twelve lots.
Could be two of them.
So that's where those exceptions would come in. Yeah, if it, that's what I, I'm just making that clear, that it's not just a exception on the setback, there would be a.
It would be as.
An exception on a lot size.
We're, we're painting him into a proverbial corner here and we need to come in and.
Well, actually, this is where you get the agreement, that something that you know could work and that we're making an agreement, uh, on that, uh, that you. That you'll get, grant that, make that exception.
Well, it's no different than those other lots, if they were only to give you two extra feet to make your trail or if you're gonna let those.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I, I would grant that exception. That if those, you know, for two feet across the frontage, they're gonna lose that, I would grant those exceptions to be under the R one fifteen.
I think that's a good, a good compromise here.
I mean, the lots, it's going from personal land to public land. And it's not, it's not changing the amount of houses or that are going in, right? We're not, so I think I.
And now we're gonna.
And I think that look for the city would be way better.
System. And that's a clean, that's a clean look still for all of these properties, uh.
Dale has something to work on, sweet grant.
Oh, yeah.
They have a tree sketching deal.
Excellent. Before you leave, I'd like to talk to you. I need to talk to you about. About a couple of, uh, what's your?
I, I don't know if that's, Shay's the expert on whether that all would work out, but.
I would feel good about that.
That would be a better solution for what you're trying to accomplish.
A four foot.
You can always go back to Payson later and if you had decided to remove the trail, you can. You can run your trail how you.
I personally think that this would be a good compromise and I don't know if you'd have to do anything additional to this. I think it accomplishes both. Because the trail off, off the road.
With the, the wider strip there that is not a part.
Yeah, yeah, and it does, yeah.
On the trail.
You just imagine, you know, forty-six feet of concrete and ten four feet of, or forty-six feet of road and ten feet more concrete and there's. No division other than a concrete gutter.
I could strike these and breathe though.
That's just.
That's why I.
I don't even want my house with that kind of a landscape.
I think this is a good compromise, I think it'll, you know what I mean? All right.
I knew it'd make Dale happy.
I can throw out one other, one other suggestion.
I knew it'd make Dale happy, so.
One other suggestion. Throw out one other suggestion with this and that is, you've, you've got, uh, trail shown going down Park.
Yeah.
Park Drive, it's, it's just out in the pavement, but that's.
Yeah.
So you, you've got that shown on there, at that location. Let's have a, a cross in.
Crosswalk.
On, crosswalk on Elbridge Drive and, and actually tie it into this, this trail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're doing a, where's that, is that, what's that, what's that segment, three-way stop on this thing or just the one side or?
Well, once it's straightened out, I know what was talked about before was to make it a three-way stop at that point.
Would you wanna do that, especially if you're gonna have a crosswalk?
Yeah.
Oh, it won't be skinny on this?
Yeah, cause, Gary's right, we gotta get an ADA ramp.
Gotta do ADA ramps. Well.
I, I thought it would not be three-way, I thought the upcoming traffic was just gonna flow straight through.
So we don't know.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys anyway, so. You probably want an ADA ramp though, right there, just for future.
I forgot, you and I talked about something the other day too, that, and it's, uh, it.
Yeah.
At Hillside Drive, and, and this is really final stuff, but just to bring it up. Uh, so we had the, we had a turn lane strip there at Park Drive. Uh, shown as part of that and it, so we got the street width there, uh, Nelson and I were talking about. Traffic's really picked up on Hillside Drive, it'd be a good idea to go ahead and strip the left-hand turn lane into Hillside Drive. It's no difference on pavement widths, it's just a, it's just a striping. Well, the striping, I mean, what they've shown is when it's striped, people go slower. So if you make the road feel narrower with the turn lane in there, then they actually slow them down.
Well, then in the winter too, you're not gonna stop people from going up that road, they're trying to stop to get turned on Hillside and then you can't get going again, going up that steep road.
So.
Which would, that's what I think is an important issue.
Yeah, so. That was the point that Shay and I had talked about.
Cause Hillside comes on, right?
So can we grant preliminary based on exception at this time or do we need to have, uh, what's a preliminary?
We can grant preliminary with some recommendations back to. Planting Commission.
Well, you guys.
You don't need to recommend, not even.
They're just an advisor.
Just grant it with these, with these conditions. And then, and then we'll handle that with. We'll have them update the drawings, so we have a, an updated preliminary drawing, but we'll handle it, we'll actually handle it at flying.
Jared, do you have any additional comments from Planting Commission perspective on this?
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at this stand back and I'm not trying to excite you or anything, but you know, a month ago you had a discussion about ten foot sidewalk. He goes ahead and engineers it as that and then we're having a discussion again. I think, I think, you know, maybe there needs to be a little more of this and just get it done.
Well, fortunately.
And have the decision, so, I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
Well, that's why I wanna give a decision tonight.
Because that was part of our discussion is, well, he's done the ten foot sidewalk, that's what we understood City Council kinda wanted. So, yeah. I mean, that's probably my only other input.
But any, any input as far as the, the design that we're talking about?
I think it's a big compromise, I, I think ten foot wide trail is ridiculous, I mean.
Yeah.
I, but, I don't know, I don't run, so. If I run, somebody's chasing me.
And that hails enough to push the bike up.
There we are.
I mean, I think eight foot, I think eight foot is good, cause when I run with the double stroller, I mean, I take out my.
Fair share.
Fair share, yeah.
Does the city allow the ATVs on the trails or?
No.
Okay.
They say no, but. I see them all. So cars either drive.
No motorized vehicles.
You've got all the exceptions written down.
Okay.
Nelson's working on it.
Put a motion out, get this going. If you can capture the exceptions.
He's working on it, right?
You working on it? This is going to be, I don't know, motion.
It's going to be a lot mess.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we give preliminary approval to Gladstone US States with the following items being added to this turn lane off of Elk Ridge Drive on the hillside. A crosswalk from where the trail intersects with Park Drive and Elk Ridge Drive. And also allowing for a, the trail to be set back four feet and a narrower trail about eight feet. And allowing for an additional two feet exception on all of the lots for frontage.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, yes.
And then the lot size.
And the lot size, because we're dedicating the two feet to the city.
And corresponding, and corresponding the exception related to the overall lot size because of the movement of the trail.
Did everybody know what you said?
He did your parts. I hate to see you try to do it, he just did.
Said four feet back, that meant four feet off the, from the road, and then you'll have an eight foot trail.
So then you get.
Which pick up two feet. We will deem.
Your four feet into the lot, man.
Basically deed over two feet, I guess that that works or?
Four, four feet, isn't it?
We gave up two feet.
Okay, they gave up two feet of.
That's why I want to make sure we're clear, when you said four feet, I was thinking of moving the line.
Because we went from ten feet to twelve feet total. And we decreased the.
So I think we're good.
I just wanted to make sure too, when you start to bring that up.
Right, that's what I said, I want to make sure.
I'm questioning myself, so.
We're all on the same page.
For a total distance of road to lot line of twelve feet. Twelve feet.
Right, and setback will still be measured from the back of the curve.
Yeah, we just need to vote.
Are we okay?
So you need to vote.
We're okay, everybody? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are you sure I say it's aye? Oh my gosh.
I don't know, Phil. That's brilliant up here, but I, you know, one thing.
Okay, we got Parkview Corner water allocation. Pretty much straightforward.
Shay, want to comment on that at all?
So, let's see, Parkview water allocation, I've calculated that at five point eight one acre feet. And so, taking this out of somebody's water rights. And so the recommendation is to allocate five point eight one acre feet from water right number fifty-one, eighty-five, ninety-three, A four zero two six three to the Parkview corner subdivision.
Probably. He might, he might.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
We have three people.
Excluding Dale, but, oh, that Dale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need your form, you've got form. Oh, we've got a form, we're okay.
All right, now I'll make a motion that we allocate five point eight one acre feet of water from the water rights previously transferred to the city of Elk Ridge. Change application number fifty-one dash eight five nine three onto C A four oh two six three from the one hundred and eight point nine acre feet water that was previously transferred to the city.
To Parkview Corner.
To, to the Parkview Corner.
We have a second, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, aye.
Aye.
Because.
Are you opposed?
Yeah, because we've got two application numbers. I mean, we've got water rights coming from two different application numbers.
Oh, did I give you a, well, use the one on the spreadsheet, sorry, did I give you a fifty-nine, five-eight-eight-six?
Well, I was, I was reading off of this, not that. Oh, sorry.
Which one are you reading?
Okay, so no, this is, maybe I was looking at the Harrison Heights, which is split. Okay, never mind, sorry. Okay, so.
We have a motion and a second by, who seconded? You seconded this?
Chris seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
There's more of that. That's how we're tracking where the water's been allocated. So we have an accounting.
Water allocation for Premier Point Phase Two.
Okay, so Premier Point Phase Two, that's been calculated in fourteen point zero seven acre feet of, of water from water rights that are, have previously been transferred into the cities. So the recommendation is allocation of fourteen point zero seven acre feet of water from water right number fifty-nine, five-eight-eight-six, A three-nine-zero-one-eight to Premier Point Subdivision Phase Two.
Okay, so, this is, I knew the history on the other water rights, okay? On, on this, these are water rights that state engines were signed off, if they're ours or not, be contesting.
No, they, they're, they're ours. This again was some that Dean Ingram had brought in with Mr. Garlic, I think it was Jay Garlic. And so, they, basically Jay sold his parts of the rights to Gary Hanson for this Premier Point Development. And so this actually leaves Gary with point four-two-one acre feet, which will be applied toward the Phase Three when that final plat comes through. Along with, he's going to either bring some other water in or buy some other water in the city at that point.
We'll make sure that pre-two thousand. Okay. We'll make a motion that we allocate fourteen point zero seven acre feet of water from the water rights previously transferred to the city of Elk Ridge. Change application number fifty-nine dash five-eight-eight-six, A three-nine-zero-one-eight.
Yeah, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess I should make comment, two or absent.
Well, one of them's semi-absent.
Yeah. I'm talking physically.
He's getting the city hooked up with trees right now.
Okay, city council meeting, April eleventh, twenty-seventeen. Any comment?
I'll make a motion that we approve in minutes for city council meeting of Tuesday, April eleventh, two thousand seventeen, as.
Is that a second? I'm sorry, I should go up. Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries with two absences. I think we've got to the end of this thing and we'll.
Circle back around to the work session.
So.
Do you want to adjourn the meeting first?
We probably need to adjourn our regular city council meeting. So if I have a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion that we turn over to the council meeting. And go back into the work session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two absent. Great, we made it through.
So sure. Are there any MyLars or something that we have assigned on the.
Nope.
I just figured since we're here.
Yeah.
Let's take care of it.
Yeah, you said you added two things on.
I added one thing.
Okay.
Will you get the plans for me please? And whack Dale out there?
Yeah.
Whack him for me, will you?
No, it's the curb be better.
Oh. Oh.
On the White House. It's going to happen, okay, whether or not you want it.
Hi Dale. Yeah, we got locked up while you were gone.
Dale, we're done now.
We're done.
Actually, so we never bring it up, but one thing that I brought up before is, is that, that moon strip on the, on the foreheads of, of the church, you know, the, the guy, the, the guy, the church. Yeah, I'm sorry. He said, actually, I think it's the city, you can do whatever they want out there, the city property. Uh, Dean was just saying, he said, and he knows pretty much the point. He said, I think if you, if you have pretty low, uh, down through there, you got to reach where your curb is. You know, you got to control your water. And I had recommended that.
Yeah, we're going to look at.
Because if we don't, like where they cut.
Sierra thing.
Yeah, well, it'll be like where they made the cuts, and because it wasn't curbing to control them, water came down and then went in underneath it.
Yes, it will. Wash out his, his asphalt driveways and will, but, but I had recommended that before. So this is, it's crazy to not, not put that, you know, clean that up, you got to at least put the gutter in. But, but, you know, and you were thinking, you know, we got at least, that he's going to have to pay for it. Dean was saying, he actually would legally have to pay for it. He said, the city is responsible for controlling the water, he said, you might.
That's the better portion, yeah.
The gutter and the sidewalk, he said, actually, I don't, I don't see myself being there more than a year anyway. And he said, he's eighty-six, and he actually looks, he's, I know, he looked like he's in good shape. His life value, he said, I've been looking at these fifty-five and older homes, but that's what he was meaning. I thought it, I thought he'd be dead in another year. He's just planning to sell that and, and move to a fifty-five and older, you know, home there. But I think, you know, and I was just asking Dean if, could you get any, you know, just a figure on that.
There should be money in our storm drain fund.
Storm drain fund.
I mean, that's why we have that there is to go and clean up some of these areas where we have gaps and things. I mean, that's.
That's, that's what needs to happen now, you know, just coordinating with Dean on that, because it's a lot cheaper. We just have him.
Qualify for that too.
But why would we have a scalding fee for all of theirs, but then not? I mean, I just don't know where that fine line's from.
Well, they were doing.
Yeah, what president.
Well, and I told him that, I told him those three options, he said, well, I probably can't. He said, I'm not interested in paying for it, and he said, if, if the city can't stop them, it is for putting a lien on it, but, but it is going to be city responsibility for a runoff one. We approved the other plat.
But the same thing with the scalding.
Yeah, why'd we charge them?
City and profit district, do they pay for it? No, that's what I'm saying, so.
We just, we just widen that, no, that is, well, it is a, it is a one-time situation. You don't have any other place uptown than it's one house.
Yeah, we did, yeah. Yeah, Columbus has one.
Columbus.
We've got another one.
That's where we ought to be using that.
We tried bringing money.
No, the city should pay for it.
Well, the money is there for that purpose, but it's more so that we confront the money and then have them pay us back. It's more like a revolving.
You have, what he said is, you've got nine foot of footage there and you can't force the people to put in sidewalk, why didn't we have to put in sidewalk? You got forced to put in, you didn't got to do it, I guess, and put a lien, but you got a lot of people there on both sides. You affect two sides.
When they did the curbing on Fremont Way, they made everybody pay for it, some of those homeowners had them put on their homes.
Yep, same with.
Well, we need to, we need to do it one way or the other though. We have to do it while it's being done, that's what I'm saying. Stupid.
Well, I think it's his responsibility to pay for it.
Okay, let's reel this back in so that we can agree with you, but we need to, city's not going to pay for it if we.
Okay, then put a lien on it, let's, let's go ahead and coordinate with Dean while they're doing it, instead of doing it later on.
True story.
All right, so Civic Center, I just about got my money, but you got, couldn't wait to do it. One of the things that you want me to do is to get with, get the plans for Eagle Mountain. So I talked to Ken and he gave us the plans, whipped up another set of plans for us and delivered them down. These are the plans for their city council, their, their city building. And if you, beautiful building, has almost zero applicability to Elk Ridge.
Yeah, there's.
And I just got it, there's a library. We're not going to have a library, because we'll never staff a library. Right? There are city council chambers, does the city council chamber look like a permanent seating? So it's not a multipurpose area, which is what we would, I, I would like to see this do, right? But the big thing is, you know, if you look at it, the size of their city necessitates some, you know, a permit, an area of, for, for building permits in the building department, and then they have the front office department, you know, and they have a lot of office space, right, because they are housing everybody in there. So, you know, from an applicability standpoint from here, there's some ideas that I kind of like, right? Obviously for some of the ideas, but there's not really any practicality of taking like what Eagle Mountain did and say, those are good plans, let's just build that. How many square feet is that?
Oh my goodness, I have no idea.
Well, see, when it started, it started here and then they added this and then this and then.
And it just got bigger.
Yeah.
Right? It just got bigger.
Coordinates and I, I think the external.
Sit your anywhere.
It'll be on the other page, it'll provide, that's, it'll be more.
All right, let's set it professional.
Thirteen thousand square feet.
Thirteen thousand.
So about the size of one of those, you building lots down there.
Is that big enough for our city?
So that's what I said, I mean, I'm not trying to knock the plan out of the diner.
Let's make a bomb shelter in case.
What I want to do is just bring this in and say, this is, this is it, right? And unless you see something, I don't, I don't see a lot of.
I mean, I know other cities have looked at this that are larger than us.
Right.
And they like it because of the way that it, it just kind of flows.
Yeah, it does, it's a great design, and I think that, you know, if we didn't have a, a public facility, you know, this facility for public works, you know, and you needed more office space and those kind of starts to lend itself a bit better. Although I, you know, I still don't see us having a library in Elk Ridge because of the cost of maintenance and staffing it and those kind of things like that.
But what if you just, I mean, if you just took like this part right here, right? So you've got this.
Well, that's kind of all, so, so in my brain, and I want to get with Jared and kind of draw some stuffs, you know, kind of a preliminary kind of thing, so we go out and get some kind of a official start with this, but it's, it's more about kind of having the front area and having the office space, you know, on the front and probably down the side, one side of the council chamber. But then the council chambers here, it's no permanent seating, there would be, there would be seats that we could fold up and then use as a multipurpose area for voting or whatever the case may be, so.
Right, yeah, you want a lot of.
Right, with a kind of a divider between the, maybe the council desks.
You could even make these.
You could, but they're difficult to move, so you, you just divide off the room, right? But, but like I say, I mean, other than the fact that you've got to have, what, maybe six offices and a, five offices and a, and a, and a conference room, right? A council area, you know, and then, and then the office, the, part of those offices would be in a larger room that they would sit where the front desk and that is, right?
So are you thinking two-story though?
What's that?
Two-story?
So we'd want to base it for they're cheap and, you know, for the storage aspects and whatnot, and then, and then the main level where it'd be all this.
If you're over three thousand square feet on any of those, you have to have an elevator.
Three thousand.
But if we have the.
Thousand on any of those levels.
No, if we have an upper and a lower level, they have access to both levels.
You would have to, if you see those levels, if any of those levels exceed three thousand square feet, you have to have an elevator.
All right, we're at two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's good to know that, that's what we.
No, it's, it's good to know that on the front end instead of.
Well, of course, yeah.
But it's a level elevator, you know, it's not a ton of money.
And then the upper, the upper room, right, we would want another room and where we could have, I think personally, a reception center, it would be a nicer room, it'd be large, you know, you'd still have your bathrooms and your bride room kind of thing. But if you look at what Salem's charging for their, their, they hundred bucks a day. So you, and it's like, well, what if I meet them the day before, well, that's another eight hundred dollars, right? And they're, they're pretty busy down there, you know what I mean? So this is a much nicer facility. With a nice view, with a nice view that we could tap.
Second floor, you've got a much bigger view.
We would have.
Put a nice glass.
That's why I want to, if we're going to do a second floor, because then you've got a big view area. And that's why I think we could rent it out to offset the costs.
I think we could recoup some of the costs.
There's not a super nice reception area down in South Utah County.
No, there's none.
Actually, the, my, my son.
You'd have to have nice grounds.
My son's renting the, renting that, the, the community center that they built on Summit Ridge. And it's not, not a big, not a huge center, but that's sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred? So I think it's.
What are you going on this?
I think a thousand dollars a night would be something that you could.
Would it be cheaper for our residents?
Oh, I think the resident, you could use, for the multipurpose areas or for the.
To rent.
No, I'm not sure.
Even though property taxes help pay for it? Because in some cities it's a little, there's a resident discount, you know, like, okay, it's eight hundred. For residents, a thousand, not, something like that.
I was thinking more that, you, you know, if you, you charge them, but maybe the day before you give like a half a day or something where they can not be charged at all.
Yeah.
Right, as opposed to non-residents having to pay for the whole bills, does that make sense?
I would, but there's a lot of restrictions we can talk about.
Yeah, that's, that's stuff we could do.
But if you could get two thousand dollars a weekend, and you've got three weekends, six thousand dollars a month.
That's true.
Right?
Yeah.
Three or four months.
You certainly pay for the maintenance and you certainly can, you know, do.
And, and part of that, part of it.
I would want to bank on it, I mean, this is something that you've got to be careful because you would want to enter into a.
Well, and every weekend is not going to be, you know.
But if you get three out of four, maybe?
It depends on the month, you know, because some. It depends on month, you know, cuz some, some months, like weeknights might, you know what I mean, during wedding months.
And if Dell could get the, finally get the landscape done, then Elk Ridge drives. We would, we would, uh, it's a nice, it's a nice, it'll be a nice, really nice coming up into Elk Ridge and. Nice ground, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the thing is though, if we can afford, like, if we're gonna bond for it or whatever, right? And then if we say, okay, and all the extra money we bring in on the rental, we just put towards paying off the bond faster.
Right.
For sure.
But you gotta be able to pay for it.
Right.
If they don't.
But yeah, but she's like, don't count on it. But that's what I'm saying, we would bond for the amount of the building, and then that rental money, we would put to like paying off the bond early, so if we can, right?
Or, or for replacing things that are out that you need for that type of, for that type of.
Three thousand where there's tables, chairs, thirty-five hundred, right? You know, you know, one thing.
About that size.
One thing that, uh, I don't know, that Salem did, maybe a little money.
Five or six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
One thing that Salem did, uh, that is, is a lot less expensive, is just had a big patio, uh, that's, that's covered, you know, just part of the roof structure comes out. That is pretty inexpensive, uh, you know, to that, to that east or to the, and have that part of access, uh, you know, the upstairs and down there.
I mean, I, I think, I, are you okay if we just kinda take this off? You've seen it. I think the next step is.
Yeah, cuz we do something like that, you gotta have restrooms, you gotta have, you gotta have a type of kitchen type area.
Warming kitchen kind of.
Something. Nothing else, it becomes a staging area for caterers.
Lunchroom.
And staff, yeah.
Kind of small lunchroom.
Same type of stuff, you get into an official kitchen, you got.
Oh, you have to get restaurant minutes, you can't. It has to be more commercial equipment.
Grease it or where everything is.
Yeah, no, it would just be warming.
Like what Salem.
Microwave kind of.
Like what the churches, right?
Cuz most places are gonna cater, they're gonna come in and they probably all they need is to.
They need a fridge and sometimes an oven to keep something warm, right? Refrigerator.
Refrigerator is what they need.
Anyway, yeah, Shane.
So the, the last couple of city halls I've been involved with, uh, have been about two hundred and eighty a square foot.
How many?
Two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. So if you're six thousand feet, six thousand square feet roughly, I mean, you're, you're one point six million.
Now, that can land or not land, is that just the building?
Seems really high.
Yeah, that seems just a hair.
It may, it probably had to.
It may count the land in there.
Because, I mean, if you're taking high end.
I was gonna throw one eighty on it, one eighty is a hundred.
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, like granite.
The land in there.
Nicer carpet, wider moldings, fancier doors.
I mean, but if you do that upstairs, then you can charge a lot more, right? Like the upstairs, we want it to be really nice that you bring it up.
It's a nice area, yeah.
Which is nicer than.
But I'm not, I'm not talking like, you know, you'd get crazy, but just vaulted ceilings, you know, just scissor truss kind of stuff or whatever, you know, I don't know what you do, but.
Yeah, you need nice, uh, you need that kind of an open, uh.
Open field.
Yeah, for sure.
And some beams or some.
But we don't have to have downstairs, I mean, there's not a lot of need, even with the Elk Ridge complete build out, I don't see the need for a ton of offices, cuz we got this building that's take care of all the public.
Public safety and.
Public safety and we got the public.
A lot of them attach a fire station to it, you know, in their, in their, uh, so, community buildings.
We don't need any of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
You were looking at, uh, at three thousand?
No, it'd be bigger than that.
Okay. So, uh. Like I say, I mean, we just catch it out, but you know, you gotta be, yeah, what can I like? Let's see, uh, Salem's was about a hundred and something long, a hundred and twenty long, and I think, they said it was about a hundred by hundred. So that'd be what, is that, uh?
A hundred by hundred?
Ten thousand, ten thousand square feet. Just thousand, it's too big, it comes along.
Jared, that was three thousand per floor, right? If it's over three thousand per floor.
You have any level over three thousand square feet.
Right, but you could have six thousand square feet on two floors and still be okay, it's not three thousand total, it's per floor.
Two hundred or two thousand nine hundred.
Nine hundred and ninety, per floor.
For a basement and a main floor and the top floor. But he, he thinks we need bigger, right? And.
No, but he's saying per floor, not total building size.
Five or six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
I hope you'll keep it, you know, down around five.
If, if, if you're gonna invest in an elevator, you might as well go to three floors and do a large storage area in the basement.
Yeah.
Elevators, you pay more in maintenance than you do the initial construction.
That's, that's.
I mean, if you're, if you're under two or three levels, that's, that's the problem there.
So this, this room is twenty-five feet long, fourteen feet wide.
And it needs to be twice as big for just this.
And I think you need, I can't remember, I think I said thirty feet, thirty feet wide and about forty.
Thirty by thirty.
About fifty feet deep.
I was gonna say, you need a more difference because that's.
Thirty by thirty.
Because by the time you put your council on, then you divide the room off so that, you know, you could just use it as a multipurpose room, right?
You lose ten feet at least.
Close the door.
Then you'd open it up and then you'd be council room, right? There's no reason not to utilize the room as much as you possibly can, which says, it's, can be used by residents, the seniors, the voting, the, you know what I mean? If we had a, you know, whatever.
I think you'd probably want at least two thousand on each level though.
What's that?
You'd want about two thousand square feet on each level.
Like almost three. Two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Eleven inches and fifteen, sixteen.
By the time you, by the time you do a thirty-foot wide room plus a ten-foot hallway and you got fifteen-foot offices, right? You're already, you know, sixty feet wide.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so it's gonna be more than like a nine thousand square foot building with the basement main floor.
But I don't need, I don't think you need to go a hundred feet deep. That's big. That's big.
Well, you gotta anticipate how many offices you're gonna need.
That's the whole thing.
I don't know those numbers, somebody's gotta give us those numbers.
And then how much, you know, once you get the basic needs of the office, right? How many offices, the restrooms, the, those, those, that, then you look at, well, what does that do for an upstairs level? And then you're gonna have to balance that out, about how much can you rent it for, what's the size need to be, right? And if you don't.
The office space, the open areas, all that, that's gonna force the hallways, the restrooms, all that, just occupancy, so.
Right.
That's, that, that, those are the numbers you need.
Yeah.
Well, if you had nine thousand square feet, a hundred and eighty dollars, it'd be one point six two million. But I mean, if we have our savings and we get, you know, four hundred thousand of one-time money to add to our savings.
Well, I think, I'm hoping that we could, we may need a bond for some of it, but certainly the majority of it, I hope we can cash flow it, right? Just pay it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, cuz how much do we have in savings right now that's?
Well, boils down to when it's all said and done, I think that you end up with, I think we have like four hundred thousand dollars.
We're keeping four hundred there, right?
Not encumbered in any way.
Yeah.
Including the twenty-five percent that we need, that, that we can have in there, right? That's, that I consider encumbered.
Yeah, so we have four hundred thousand on top of our four hundred thousand savings.
And that, and that four hundred, you know, that's like. Takes all, we've taken all that out as well, right?
Yeah, but if we brought in four hundred thousand.
But then we have lots that we could potentially develop, and I think we could turn those a fairly short amount of time, so the risk isn't, isn't long, right? I would hate to get into a development cycle that says, we gotta make sure that economy lasts nine months, I'm not really thrilled about that, but if it could go two months.
Yeah.
Right? We get the improvements in and settle them at the right time. But I think, I really think that the next step is get the basic design about office space and those kind of things, see where that ends up. Right? Because until then, we, we don't even, we have no idea what we're gonna have.
Yeah, size wise.
And you may not need to have a full basement.
Yeah, that's.
And you may not need to.
Yeah, not that big.
It'll be your cheapest square foot issue.
That's what I was gonna say, if it's the cheapest, I mean, we don't wanna like.
Cuz you already have to go down that and all four feet for frost and all that.
Yeah, that's true.
I was gonna say.
Probably a hundred dollars a square foot.
I would.
You go in there, you do basic, you know, basic stuff for storage.
Yeah, you're gonna down there, I mean, you're not doing the full, full.
Actually, something like that.
But the thing is, then we'd have the space if we ever did need it, we would have the space to expand and put offices and finish it. I, I mean, I, I would put a full basement in.
Yeah.
Just. All of it back on the walls. So the lot's pretty flat on all, but, you know.
It's pretty flat on both.
So, so my experience has been, I've, I've walked through this with.
Good.
Several cities over the years, and they always project out twenty years and say, okay, what do we need? And in your case, we project out and build out.
Right, exactly.
Cuz we're almost there.
Nine thousand people.
You know, what do you need? And the really funny part is, is it, so everybody build it, designs for twenty years, builds out to that, and two or three years later, they're talking about it and saying, oh, I wish we had three or four more offices. And it's, and it's, and it's just like in your house. If you, if you had an extra thousand square feet in your house, you would use it. And, and that's what happens is, is you, you end up using it and, and you get used to using it. So then, when you grow, you feel pinched even though.
And we wanna look forward to that, but we don't wanna get crazy either, right? We, we do have a pretty, I mean, we do know for the most part what build out's gonna be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right? So anyway, just as often as I think we've resolved this.
Kelly Annix and a bunch of land. How, what, I mean, sorry, I just had to throw a wrench in this.
They have to bring their own water, water rights.
Build their own waters.
Yeah, there really isn't anywhere to.
It's getting to the point where.
Unless we find some way to build houses that float in the air.
Yeah.
Anyway. So I think, I think it's getting a, a really, really, really rough draft, I mean, just a, a real rough idea of what it looks like, right? And then, then will you approve some of it so we can like go get a real draft architect going on it?
I mean, I can do a little sketch, I mean, it's all sort of footage is out of it.
So if we work it out, you know, we're ready, right? To get, to get to that point where we can actually get, so real floor plans and get a real bid on it, so that we really know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's the goal, that's my goal.
And be prepared for a big architect fee bill, potentially.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, cuz you, architect fee, I mean, you're gonna be what, half to one, one percent of whatever the building cost estimate is?
They're usually running fully engineered, you're, you're six, seven percent.
Okay, so if you're talking one point six, it's a big bill.
But you know, that includes all your, you know, set.
But I didn't say engineering.
You just said drawing.
Didn't say it all engineered yet, right? But I'm just preparing them. We just gotta get to the point where we can get an idea of what this thing is gonna be. At some point in time, we're gonna have to, you know, do a dog and pony show kind of thing for the residents.
Yeah, well, I, I think that we do that before we commit to actually, this is, and we're running them.
So who's gonna, who's gonna round up the numbers? Who's gonna round up the, I mean, I think you ought to assign it. Round up what?
Assign it.